Let's make an order. Tonight, we're going to be leading the pledge by Avery Litchin-Walter, Segal Elementary, Autumn Rain Curry, and Aiden Curry from Campus School.
I am the witness to the flag of the United States of America, in this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the unity of all.
We're going to have a moment of silence, and in our moment of silence, if we could remember Mike Blanton, he's one of our employees, husband, Amy Blanton's husband, he was in the hospital, just had surgery, so if we can remember him. Approval agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blyer, second by Mr. Tack. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, second by Ms. Blankenship. Any discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Before we go into number six, Mr. Sandbig, he needs to go to budget meeting up at the courthouse, so I've asked him to let's go over 10D on the budget before he leaves. So, Mr. Odom, I'm going to turn that over to you.
This is Fund 141 for the 2013-2014 General Purpose School Fund Budget. As presented at the Board's May 7, 2013 budget meeting, the proposed 2013-2014 budget for general purpose schools, Fund 141, has $286,293,321 in projected revenues and $299,994,865 in projected expenditures. The budget is currently out of balance by $13,701,544. The major area still being reviewed is teacher and support staff for Sturts Creek High School. We used the $9,252,756 from fund balance in order to fund our 2012-2013 GPS budget. And this is what you discussed last night, some more in your work session. Recommend approval, motion to approve the proposed 2013-2014 General Purpose Schools Fund 141 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Blyer, second by Mr. Niffer. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Mr. Sandbig, you're good to go. All right, let's go back to number six on the agenda, Mr. Odom.
Number six is a recognition. This is a presentation of the DA Civilian Award to Lieutenant Colonel Doyle Boyd. I'm going to ask Colonel Houchen's if he would come up and make the presentation for us tonight.
Well, thank you, sir, but I'd like for you to come forward too.
Okay, I'll do that.
Because I'm doing this on behalf of the Department of the Army and also the Rutherford County Board of Education. I'll give you this, and I'll read the citation. Colonel Boyd has been with us close to 20 years. He started Riverdale High School in 1994. He's had a very, very successful program, Honor Unit with distinction. Time does not permit me to mention some of the outstanding events that he's had in his program, one of which lost his life about four years ago in Iraq in defense of his nation. So at this time, sir, I'll read the citation, and you'll present the medal. Department of the Army Lieutenant Colonel Retired Doyle A. Boyd is awarded the Outstanding Civilian Service Medal for outstanding service while serving as senior army instructor at Riverdale High School's junior ROTC program from 1994 to 2013. Lieutenant Colonel Boyd's intense loyalty and uncompromising standards of conduct have provided an impetus for the growth of the program and has resulted in Riverdale High School having achieved Honor Unit with Distinction for each year from 1994 to 2012. Lieutenant Colonel Boyd's dedication to duty, commitment to excellence in education, bring great credit upon himself, the United States Army, and the United, Cadet Command, the United States Army, and Rutherford County Board of Education.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
God bless you, Colonel.
Number seven, Mr. Odom.
This is Books from Birth. The Rutherford County Books from Birth Foundation representative Mitch Fetterman and Brian Nail will make a presentation to the Board of Education concerning the results of the 2013 partnership and fundraising effort.
Thank you all for allowing us to come here today to present this. So we just concluded our spring school fundraiser for Books from Birth, and just so everybody knows, our mission at Books from Birth is to get age-appropriate book in the hand of every child in Rutherford County under the age of five years old. I'm very proud to say it was a successful fundraising campaign. We exceeded our goal of $25,000, raised throughout the school, and that's going to go right to purchasing books and getting them back out into the community so that we can raise childhood literacy and have successful students as we go forward. I'm also pleased to announce the drawing of the first and second prize for school participation. These awards are for schools that were able to raise at least a dollar per student, and we had several schools that were able to achieve and exceed that goal, but the two that were picked, as far as winning, first prize goes to La Casis Elementary School, $2,500.
Mr. Lyndale Duke.
And our second prize of $1,000 goes to Black Moon Middle School.
Thank you, guys, very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Duke, Mr. Shelton, for participating. Books from Birth is just a great program to get our students started before they get to school. So our schools, for the past several years, I don't know, James Evans, you have any of this, I didn't get you prepared for this, do you know the last several years, how much we raised total for Books from Birth, you got a guesstimate?
I know, but they probably tell you. Yes, so we're right at about $70,000 for the last three years.
About $70,000 for the last three years. So our students and parents are really coming through for Books from Birth. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Great.
Number eight. Tonight, we've got several visitors that have come forward, turning in their paperwork and everything, so we'll take them in order that we receive them. I'd like to mention to everyone that try to limit your comments to three minutes, and first one we have is Mr. Scott Moore.
Chairman, you want to remind them of what we won't comment.
Okay, let me make one more comment. Generally, we won't make any comments after you get done speaking. We'll have a discussion at the end of the meeting. I'm sure Mr. Odom may have some comments on some of these topics, and any board member that wants to bring up issues and respond to them, we'll do it at that time. So, Mr. Moore?
My name is Scott Moore. I live in Chriscana, Tennessee, and I have a sixth grade, a son that's in the sixth grade in the school system here. I've been married to the same woman, I call her my wife for life, Lisa Moore, I think you're familiar with her, for 27 years. And I'm going to dispense with any thank yous for allowing me to speak, as it is my right to speak to this board. My taxes pay for you to be here, and since you feel the need to control our right to speak, to be honest, I'm affronted by that. I am here to address the subject of the sixth grade world history book. I understand that you have marginally looked at and addressed some of the questions about the offensive handouts that were used, however, we've had no answers that I'm aware of that you're planning any actions to address the Islamic dominance and untruthful history in the textbook. As a matter of fact, I understand that several, if not more of you, have stated publicly that you have no problem with this textbook. All I can say is, come on, man. If you've really read the textbook, I don't think you would feel that way. It would seem to me that you have not read the report that we sent you of Dr. Bill Warner's report on the book. Bottom line, you are elected officials and employees that are paid by my tax dollars, and you are supposed to be the watchers on the wall for our children. We are not satisfied with your responses to this textbook, and I represent a large group of Rutherford County school system parents when I say that we are insisting that you address this textbook, and do so with a plan in place before any more sixth grade or other students in our school system are taught world history in this county from this textbook. We want the section on Islam either to be not taught at all, or if you insist on teaching it, we request that you be allowed, that we be allowed, through a group of educated parents, to write a suitable, truthful, historical, factual account of Islam to be an addendum to replace that section. Please don't tell us that you can't do that after you told my wife that our teachers could pull class curriculum materials from any source they chose without vetting. We will make sure our materials represent honest history and no untruthful doctrine. We do expect a formal answer back from the board on this and an opportunity to have more dialogue on this issue than just being allowed three minutes once a month to speak to you.
I've also given a look that I want to give each one. And I may shorten it a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next, we have Jackie Archer.
I'm Jackie Archer. I've lived in Murfreesboro for almost 50 years, next year it'll be 50 years. It is inherent in Americans to expect the same attitudes, values, and underlying motives of others that we have come to expect from our fellow Americans. We have for two-plus centuries been inherently trusting. We are proud of our heritage and assume that foreigners who choose to come here do so because they wish to enjoy the same freedoms that we take for granted, that they come here to America because they think this is a better country in which to live than the country that they leave behind. It is inconceivable that people would come to America to change her, that anyone would believe a system of enforced theocracy would be better than the constitutional republic that our forefathers gave us. But ladies and gentlemen, that is the case, and you don't have to look very far to find conclusive evidence of the fact. And what is the openly stated credo of the Muslim Brotherhood? Allah is our objective, the Quran is our law, the Prophet is our leader, jihad is our way, and death, for the sake of Allah, is the highest of our aspirations, unquote. And for the Americans in particular, for America, the country in particular, quote, "The brothers must understand that their work in America is a kind of grand jihad in eliminating and destroying the Western civilization from within and sabotaging its miserable house by their hands and the hands of the believers, so that it is eliminated and Allah's religion is made victorious over all other religions. It is the Muslim's destiny to perform jihad and work wherever he is and wherever he lands until the final hour comes, and there is no escape from that destiny," unquote. And what exactly does that mean? It means that they will infiltrate and insinuate themselves, and they have, into every facet and every level of our entire system, from the highest levels of our federal government, yes, the administration of our president, right down to the most local institutions, such as our city and county schools. The Muslim Brotherhood's own strategic documents detail how they infiltrate societies and replace the governmental systems with Islamic law. Their document, Phases of the World Underground Movement Plan, unquote, defines five phases of the Muslim Brotherhood's infiltration into a society. One, discreet secret establishment of elite leadership. Two, gradual appearance on the public scene and utilizing various public activities. Three, escalation phase prior to confrontation with rulers utilizing mass media. Four, open public confrontation with government through political pressure. Five, seizing power to establish the Islamic caliphate. The Muslim Brotherhood should, you need to be aware and afraid. You have been hired by us to serve our children, and it behooves you to make every effort to understand what is true, and when you do, it is your duty to do whatever is necessary to protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Archer. Next, we have, and I apologize if I get this wrong, Nader Fahmi?
Nader Fahmi.
Okay.
Thank you for having me here today. My name is Nader Fahmi. I'm a resident of Rutherford County since 2004, and I have a daughter in a middle school. This issue of the textbook actually brought my attention 30 years ago when my child asked what tolerance means. And I looked it up, and I see what she was talking about, and I read where it says on the textbook, on page 364 online, Muslim generally practice religion tolerance or acceptance with regard to people they conquered. Now, I'm from Egypt, and I know firsthand, being a captive Christian from Egypt, that this is not true. This is not the history. At no point in the history, neither in the past or the present, they practiced tolerance with any religion. Further, it says here, especially Christians and Jews. Jews will slaughter, for what we know. Whoever wrote this book doesn't know much about history. However, approved it for our children to learn, obviously, it didn't do any work on the history to see that this is not true. When I grew up, we had to memorize parts of the Quran. Nobody asked us for a question on Muslim or anything. We had to wake up or to hear the Muslims calling for prayer every five hours, five times a day, and it has to be heard everywhere in the land. Thousand tolerance. This issue brought to the Board of Education several months ago, and the evidence of it being not true is very clear. I was surprised when I looked it up online, how many times the people of Rutherford County talk about it, and how the comments that we got back from y'all, it's amazing, it's surprising, it seems like nobody want to act on it. Why do you not want to act on it? What's not clear about the evidence that the people has for you not to act on it and take this off the textbook that you are teaching our children? I think it's very simple. I think it's very clear. Simply read the history. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Grant Litchin-Walter.
Can I let somebody else go? My name's Grant Litchin-Walter. Lived in Rutherford County since 1992. I have my daughter Avery here with us, and we're here to, on behalf of Campus School, doing the math. Avery's actually been on the list to go to Campus School through her brother since she was two, so she's been waiting a long time for this opportunity. She's now seven. He went on the list in 2007, and we've been waiting and researched before that date, how good a school it was, the achievements they had accomplished at that point, and then while we're on the list, just waiting to see what's going on, but since it had been acknowledged that they were going to get to go there, starting in the fall, we've done some more research and really impressed by the performance they have, the curriculum, taking a tour of the school, kind of was refreshing to see. And we appreciate your support of all this. We hope that you'll continue to support Campus School. We think it's very vital, the results they're getting to be the flagship in the Rutherford County, is the school to be, in addition to the fact that they're training the future teachers there, giving them that example to go forward with. So, just thank you. Continue to remember Campus School. We know there's not a lot of kids there, but they are the flagship school of the county, we feel like, at least at the elementary level, and hope that they can bring up the rest of the school, the rest of the county with them. Thank you.
Next, we have April Harold.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to express my concern about Common Core. I have met with a few of you on the board, and I have met with a principal, and I have a son in kindergarten, and I used to have two older children in the county as well. First of all, to let people know, the board doesn't read the books before they agree to them, so they don't know what's in them. So that's not their fault. Their hands are tied, so they have to do what state and federal tells them to. We, I am coming here as myself, and I know there's a lot of people who feel the same way I do, and we understand that you guys are limited, and so we are asking for your help to spread the truth about Common Core. And I know Mr. Zago and Mr. Odom has been nice enough to send us information to lead us to the right places about Park and so forth, but, and Mr. Odom, you asked me to do my own research, to not just take people's words. And I told you at that point in time, I had been doing my own research, and I gave you all a packet tonight with documentation of proof of what I've been trying to tell you. Common Core is a centralized education control that destroys federalism. I handed you a cooperative agreement between the US Department of Education and Park. We're not going to go through all that, just I wanted you to see that, and you can read it at your own time. Michigan has gotten rid of Common Core by cutting it at its base by funding. And Mr. McMillan, who is a representative there, stated, "Common Core state standards were never approved by Michigan legislatures, nor were they by Tennessee legislatures." Created by a private national organization, the National Governors Association, the National Governors Association controls the content of the Common Core state standards, and the privately-owned smarter balance assessments aligns with those standards. The Department of Education is trying to put Michigan schools in Common Core without legislature approval. Giving our authority to control what is taught in our schools to any national entity is wrong. Emmett McGorty, which I will give you his face in a minute, said, "The Common Core adoption cut the people and their elected legislators out of the process. That makes it illegal." Common Core also breaks three federal laws and two educational acts. I can email those if you'd like them. Sandy Ostrowski, she is the professor of educational reform at University of Arkansas. Any other information you can get from me afterwards?
Thank you, Ms. Harold. Next, we have Ravis Curry.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Ravis Curry, and my family and I relocated to Murfreesboro in June of last year, and it has been a blessing for us to come here. We have two children that started at Campus School this fall, and we are just impressed and just immensely pleased with the results that we see from our children. The principal at Campus School, who I cannot say enough about, the teachers, the staff, are just uniquely caring and compassionate people, in my opinion. These people are truly about the mission of developing young people. I have watched the knowledge base of my children grow, and it has truly impressed me, and that is a direct proportion and directly related to the input that they get from the teachers. And I think it says to all parents that these teachers know what they're doing. My wife and I are great supporters, and we just are about the mission, and our goal is to continue to support Campus School in every way possible, and we'd like to take this time to say thank you. And I mean thank you. My, my wife and I by no means have garnered the Rutherford County Board of Education and its support of Campus School, and how it has truly supported and just helped push new innovations into the institution. You know, we played no role in that, yet we benefited from it. And we'd like to say thank you, Board of Education, thanks, Dr. Bridgman, faculty and staff of Campus School, and I think myself and most parents have a lot of the same sentiments. I mean, it's about the development of the children, and I think everyone can see that these children are going where they need to go, and we want to show our gratitude and appreciation. All right, men, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Next, we have Allison Mazzara. Is that correct? Okay.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Allison Mazzara. I have been in this town about 40 years, off and on. I'm a third generation, my family is third-generation campus school, and I think that is, speaks, speaks very loudly. My grandmother attended as a, when it was a teachers' college. I attended approximately 1978. I was in the Martha Hampton, Joyce Ely, Liz Worley era, and I'm still in contact with quite a few of my teachers. I couldn't tell you my seventh or eighth grade teacher's name, probably, or my senior high school teacher's name, but, you know, I sent Joan Mann a appreciation greeting the other day during the week. She was my fifth grade teacher there. I'm so proud that my son is there. He has come a tremendous, he has grown this year just amazingly. I want to thank the staff and Dr. Bridgman. They have really, you know, you walk in there, and it's hello, Michael, hello, how are you? Everybody knows his name. It's just wonderful, and pulling up to the school, you get the warm fuzzies, you know, and you just know it's going to be a great day. Also, he's going to become a published author tomorrow. Thank you, Ms. Gillespie. It's very exciting. He's going to dress up and do book signings, I believe, so, and I'm going to miss that. I'll be working for the state of Tennessee tomorrow, but my parents will be there, and it's just been wonderful. It's, you know, when I started there, the first day of school, I was on my way to Mitchell Nielsen, and there was an opening, and Martha Hampton called right before we left the door, out the door, and we just took the long way. And it really was the best experience probably of my life, except maybe for having my son. And just thank you so much, and your interest in supporting him and the staff and the school, and it's really going to make a difference in his life, so thank you.
Next, we have Brandon Martin.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for giving us the opportunity to speak. I am an alum of Campus School, and I was lucky and blessed I am an alum of campus school, and I was lucky and blessed enough to have all three of my children go to school there as well. This last year, I've also served on the Community Relations Board for campus school, and our objective was to enhance the reputation of campus school within the community. And it turned out to be a very easy job, because it's been a tremendous year for campus school. Not only being named one of the top 5% performance schools in the state, but we've also had a great deal of positive publicity in the media as well. All of that, of course, has been made possible by a number of people. We have an excellent principal, outstanding staff and teachers. The parents and the students are just tremendous. The, the heart of campus school is very much alive and well, ladies and gentlemen. As you probably know, campus school occupies a very special place in the hearts and the history of this community. But I also want to thank you as well. Your support of campus school has been indispensable, and we hope that you will keep us in mind in the future, because we do have further needs down the road. So, thank you very much.[673.43][673.43](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Next, we have Pete Doughty.
Thank you, board members. All is not bad, but tonight I'd like to address the Islamic situation again. As the Muslim population continues to insist that their children are not of, our children that are, who are not of the Islamic faith, be indoctrinated with information such as the five pillars of Islam, and our school system having non-Muslim students interact with these teachings is out of line. Now, this may not be going on in our system at this point. It is going on across the state. It is going on across the country. Keep in mind, according to the information provided by the Muslims, every act done is considered an act of worship and fulfills the will of Allah. So by having non-Muslim students do anything other than read, having them participate in Islamic worship is not right, as far as most of us are concerned. Perhaps some of you or all of you are concerned about being criticized as being Islamophobic bigots and insisting that Islam is not going to be forced into our school systems. That's wrong. For Muslims who insist that qualified Muslim educators participate in the textbook selection process, in particular, history, social studies, and geography text, is utterly absurd. I'm not sure that any of you realize or care about the goals of Islam being forced into our education system. Reading the five pillars of Islam on the surface seems harmless and admirable, if that's how you've chosen to worship, but don't force it by stealth jihad on other children. Those of us who are concerned enough to fight the indoctrination of our children are not the enemy. We're not bigots. We're not racist. We continue to educate ourselves on the dangers that lie ahead and how rapidly they are being pushed on our children. From the ICM website in 2008, it said, "The main focus is to ensure the mosque stronghold on our community and to expand beyond religious teachings." In our public schools, studies have shown over 500 historical eras in textbooks giving an Islamic slant to our youth. Our children are subject to learning to become a Muslim, fasting in Ramadan, which could probably be cool, learning the five pillars of Islam, memorizing verses from the Quran, adopting a Muslim name.
Sir, no, your time is up.
Oh, it is? Well, I'm sorry. I'll leave this last sheet for you guys.
Thanks, Mr. Doughty. All right, number nine, Mr. Odom.
Number nine, and Mr. Sperlock, if you'll come up. This is the naming of Oakland High School Stadium, and we have something we'd like to read before I read the motion this evening. Thank you for coming, Mr. Sperlock.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come here to recognize someone who is very special to us at Oakland High School, and I know he's very special to Rutherford County, because he retired from Rutherford County as a educator. First of all, Ray Hughes was a native of Pulaski, Tennessee, where he is, where his love of football began, when he played football at Jones County under Coach Jack Deere, whom he always said was his inspiration coach. Ray left Pulaski to come to Milton C. State University, where he tried to play football as a walk-on, but he was injured in his first year. After graduation, Ray started his coaching career as an assistant football coach and basketball coach at Critchlow Elementary. After his years at Critchlow, Mitchell Nielsen, in four years as a principal at Hobgood, he got another opportunity to coach, this time at Murfreesboro Central as a defensive line coach under Gene Wyndham. In 1970, Murfreesboro Central won the state championship with a perfect 12-0 record. Their record for three years was 29, 3, and 2. When Murfreesboro Central split, Ray became the first head football coach at Oakland High School in 1972. He set a winning precedence, going 12, and 7, and 1, two years as he coached. The defensive units in 1972 and '73 teams held their opponents to under 13 points per game. Ray returned to MTSU to help coach the Blue Raiders. After leaving MTSU, he taught a few years at Thurman Francis Middle School. Then Coach Hughes returned to coaching again at Oakland High School as a defensive coach under David Austin. Coach Austin had played under Hughes at Murfreesboro Central. While coaching at Oakland, they won a state championship in 1984. Ray retired after several winning years at Oakland to sell real estate. Ray's love and interest in football continues after retiring. He is instrumental in forming the Oakland High School Athletic Booster Club, benefiting all sports, and the Oakland End Zone Club. He was one of the first to be elected to the Oakland Football Hall of Fame. He continued to go to Oakland football's practice and games on Friday until his illness in 2005. Once again, I thank you for this opportunity. Mr. Hughes, Ray Hughes, we call him Coach. I actually had the opportunity to work with him and coach under. It was a great cornerstone. Every good organization has a cornerstone, and I would consider Ray Hughes to be one of those cornerstone, and it is very, I'm very thankful and blessed to have known him and still know him. And he would be here today, but Mr. Hughes, his illness will not allow him to come in public, but once again, I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Sperlock.
Okay, you want to read the motion? Okay, recommend approval. The motion is to approve the naming of Oakland High School Stadium as the Ray Hughes Stadium.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Tackett. Any further discussion?
I'd just say that it's with absolute great joy, Mr. Sperlock. It's been initiated, it's long overdue, and couldn't happen to a better person. It's absolutely the name that needs to be on that stadium, and I'm so pleased with it.
Anybody else? Going in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ten A.
Ten A is the Valick 403B contract. The contract to Valick to provide services for Rutherford County School System's 403B plan was awarded five years ago. Staff recommends that the contract be allowed to continue on a year-to-year basis due to the low cost for both the system and our participating employees and the wide number of investment options available to participants. And this is, again, Mr. Sam, you went over this last night, and the motion would be that we, again, contract with Valick, provide the services for our system's 403B plan on a year-to-year basis.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Ms. Blankenship. Any further discussion on this?
We talked about it quite a bit.
We did.
Yesterday with Mr. Sam Big, and I also served on that original committee, and we vetted this organization thoroughly, so we certainly have served us well.
Going in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ten B.
Ten B is school nutrition. The cafeteria petty cash fund, which is cash on hand account, for the centralized school cafeteria fund 143, for each school nutrition location, is currently approved for $10,650 for the purpose of making change. It is recommended to increase the amount by $1,200 for a total of $11,850 for the 2013-14 school year to include the newer Stewart's Creek High School cafeteria. And you have on your motion or in front of us the amounts for each school by school. And the school nutrition manager positions are designated as the petty cash custodians. The petty cash custodians will sign a receipt for the petty cash funds received and will agree to abide by the Rutherford County, Tennessee Guidelines for Petty Cash and Change Accounts. And the recommendation in motion would be to approve the petty cash accounts for the 2013-14 school year as presented.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on this? Going in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ten C.
Ten C is the summer feeding program. The Rutherford County School Nutrition Department requests the transfer of our summer feeding program from the Tennessee Department of Education School Nutrition Seamless Summer Feeding Program to the Department of Human Services DHS Summer Food Service Program. The reasons are as follows. Number one, in our most recent meetings, March 20th, 2013, the Tennessee Department of Education School Nutrition Department has strongly advised all SFAs to use the DHS program due to the stringent requirements established under the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010. Number two, reimbursement rates will also increase, providing our system with greater revenue potential to serve our children. Current rate comparisons are as follows. State reimbursement rate for summer feeding per meal, breakfast is $1.55, lunch $2.92. The DHS reimbursement rate for summer feeding per meal is breakfast $1.80 plus 18 cents for administration costs for a total of $1.98, and lunch $3.14 plus 33 cents for administration costs for a total of $3.47. Recommend approval. Motion to approve the transfer of our summer feeding program from the Tennessee Department of Education School Nutrition Seamless Summer Feeding Program to the Department of Human Services Summer Food Service Program as presented.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Nipper and a second by Mr. Tackett. Any further discussion on this one? Going in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ten E.
Ten E is the Fund 177, 2013-2014 Capital Projects Fund budget. The proposed 2013-2014 budget for Fund 177, capital projects has $2,376,189 in projected revenues and $2,465,958 in projected expenditures. The proposed budget uses $89,769 from account 34685, which is basically an ending fund balance, committed for capital projects to balance the budget. The second capital projects page shows the individual projects for 2013-14. Recommend approval. Motion to approve the proposed 2013-2014 budget for Fund 177, capital projects, and the list of projects as presented.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion on this? Going in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 11.
Number 11 is approval of non-renewal for non-tenured teachers. The board must authorize the director of schools' recommendation for non-renewal of non-tenured teachers. Might say a brief thing before we read the motion. We're in the fourth year, this year of the five years, you know, they changed tenure to five years. There's some 800 teachers being recommended to go another year. So you have a list before you of those that the principals have recommended non-renewal for these non-tenured teachers. So the recommended approval, the motion is to authorize the director of schools' recommendation for non-renewal of non-tenured teachers at the conclusion of the 2012-2013 school year.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Nipper. Any discussion on this? Going in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 12, general discussion. Want to discuss anything?
I can't, I heard of, I don't know, it would have to be a rumor about two weeks, three weeks ago or so, that there was talk of restructuring, closing campus school or something like that. And about that same time, we were over at MTSU, talking to MTSU, you know, about the program, that sort of thing, and there's no intention on our part or their part not to operate home campus school. And that's, that's where we were on that. I don't know really how that started, but there's not truth to that, that it's going to be stopped. The sixth grade social studies book, again, Mr. Zago and his staff continue to look at that and research that, you know, and we'll have to see what we do before another year. We mentioned, again, this book is one more year. It's the last year of that book. The social studies curriculum, the draft curriculum, I don't think it's been approved finally by the state at this point, removes any mention of Islam and Muslim from the sixth grade totally. It's divided based upon years, so whenever that's adopted, that would probably be 14, 15, my guess, before they put that in place to do that. So that's kind of where we stand on that at this point.
Anybody else?
I'd just say this, you know, I do sense and can recognize maybe some frustration by the three-minute pandemic that's placed and so forth, and I would say, and I've said this before, I'm more than welcome to sit down with anyone that would like to speak in a dialogue situation. I think we can express our opinions, our thought processes, better that way, and we may or may not come away with that with an agreement on how we might think, but I'm certainly welcome for that. I made that offer last time, and not have anyone take me up on that. I'd be more than glad to sit down in a dialogue situation, discuss the best of my ability.
I think we're all probably in the same situation, that we would, you know, welcome that opportunity, if that's a desire of those individuals that are frustrated and hadn't received responses that they feel like they deserve.
You know, I mean, I want to say publicly that I think we're all pretty intelligent on this committee, this board. We all understand basically the Sharia law and Islam and all of that. It's not that we're ignorant or we're taking sides of the Islam. It's that sometimes our hands are tied by state law. The state picks out the books we use, and we have to pick from that. That's my understanding, I believe. So I think, you know, we all have a good understanding of it, and we'll sit down with anybody and talk to them about, about what's going on in our schools. I think we still have some of the best schools and have the best teachers that teach it, teach, you know, the history and all of that.
I failed to mention Common Core, too.
Right ahead.
Ms. Harrell, I'm sorry, I didn't do that. Again, Common Core has been adopted by 45 states. To deal with this, the state of Tennessee has adopted it, and it's going to have to come at the state level, because, again, we as Rutherford County Schools, that's the standard that they've adopted in Common Core. That's what the test will be based on, those standards. So, I mean, we don't, we don't have a lot of choice in that, but, I mean, it may be a legislative decision or whatever it is, but, I mean, it's going to have to be addressed at the state level, just like it is in the other 45 states that have it. So, I mean, that's kind of where we stand on it. Again, basically, right now, the Common Core as it stands right now is mathematics and English language arts, including the writing that's with that. There may be other groups out there looking at other things such as science or social studies, but right now, see, Tennessee adopted its own social studies and is in that process of doing it, because it wasn't something nationally coming down for that. So the next-generation science standards, there is a group working on that. Tennessee is a part of that. I've seen some drafts, but do not know when that might be adopted, or I don't know if it'll even become a part of Common Core, since the Common Core was separate for that and those other two subjects. So that, that remains to be seen.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Paul.
My fellow, my fellow board members certainly understand and have heard me say this before. But mine is always to thank those who come and speak to the board and appreciate your courage and your, and your commitment to express your thoughts. I don't think your thoughts are empty. And I'm thinking at this moment about, we're talking about, you know, well, one more year of this textbook and then we've got to adopt a new textbook. I know I will certainly be thinking of the public comments that I've heard and take special interest when we adopt another sixth grade history textbook. And I'll do that because you came and spoke a month ago, four months before that, tonight, et cetera. So, thank you for your commitment. I take it into consideration, but I wouldn't have it if you didn't come. So, we appreciate, I appreciate what you, what you bring to our board. You are public comment. There are members of this board and certainly the director that have the ear of those at the state offices. And we get contact from time, contacted from time to time. I hear about the director being contacted by the Department of Education for the state of Tennessee and being a counsel to them from this exemplary school system of the state of Tennessee. And so, I think you're bringing it to the right place. And I think it's being well received. And I appreciate you bringing your concerns so that we can keep them in consideration. I do think that we're doing a great job. There is a fine line between exposure, education, and indoctrination. And what we've got to do is we've got to maximize education. And the comments that we get from the public help us to do that. We want to maximize education. And by doing that, sometimes we need your input. And you're giving it. That's part of our exemplary school system, your commitment as citizens. And so, I think we're on the right track. I think we're on the right track because you're here and because we're moving forward. I certainly ask for your continued support, commitment to, you know, talking with us. Common Core issues, they're going to be issues that are going to continue to evolve. This has just been put out and board members, all kinds of people, they say, wow, what's going to happen with this? It's just math and literature or language arts right now. What's going to happen in the future? Your counsel gives us the input and, you know, those things to be attentive to as we move forward. I always appreciate the hearing from you. So, thank you for coming.
Anybody else? I'd like to just basically tell each board member, I appreciate beforehand your, uh, support of the high school graduations. Based on what I've seen, we're going to have a good turnout. And I just want to thank each of you for participating beforehand. Anything else? If there's nothing else, we'll see most of you tomorrow night through Sunday night, I guess. We're adjourned.